Hey, good afternoon, everybody. It looks like it's 3:01. Today is Friday, January 3rd, 2020. And this is Marquette Township Board Special Meeting. And if you'd join us in the pledge, we'll start with that, please.
My pledge is to live by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much. Randy, roll call, please.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yes.
Secretary Tari is here, and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff present is our legal counsel, Roger Zappa.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Anybody'd like to address the board before we get started? Feel free. Okay, no board member comment. I don't believe we have any declarations of any conflicts. Any approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Policy discussion, consideration, and development today includes candidate interview for the position of township manager. Candidate number four, Dennis, if you'd like to come up to the table, you'd be by the microphone.
Microphone is on also, so.
We have done this before, so we'll try to follow the same line. It's just been a little while. We have, all of the board has received your application, your, all the introduction letter, reference checks that were done with the questions and the answers to those people. We do have the actual application. I think that's about it. We have been doing about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, roughly. Each board member will ask you a question and answer however you think you can. There can be back and forth. They know that they can ask a little bit of follow-up questions if we need to. I'd like you to start with giving us something of you, whatever you want to share, maybe ten minutes even, or whatever. So roughly ten minutes per question, and then a follow-up at the end. So that's where that kind of hour, hour and fifteen minutes comes in, somewhere in there.
Okay.
So, I mean, not on a timer or anything, but just as a guideline. So if anybody's ready, we're okay? All right, so if you want to start by sharing whatever you'd like?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First off, thanks for having me. I appreciate the, you know, that reaching back out to me after I'd withdrawn my name from consideration. Obviously, I had a health issue that came up out of nowhere, unexpected, and I thought in all fairness that it was appropriate for me to withdraw my name from consideration because I didn't think I would be able to meet your timeline, knowing that I was going to have to spend the next sixty days focused on myself. So I did appreciate the reconsideration by the board and the invitation to come back and talk to y'all. I can tell you that without giving you my medical history here, I can tell you that I'm doing very well. I went into rehab and for this issue, and it, everything's going well. It was really unfortunate genetics, and I believe we've reversed those, and I'm doing very, very well. So again, thanks for the reconsideration. Most of y'all know me since I was here four years ago, for six years, sitting in Supervisor Durant's seat. So most of you know my background, but for those of you who may not, clearly, I was in the private sector for about thirty years. I worked for an oil company, a couple different Fortune 50 companies in both tobacco and pharmaceuticals before I jumped into politics. And I found out that, you know, working together, I think that we accomplished a lot in the six years that I was here. I think the board and clearly the stable management that manager Gerard has offered for the last seventeen years moved this township forward a great deal, and I think the board certainly has continued to do that. One of the things that came out of that is I found out I had a real knack for it, and I enjoyed the heck out of it. Although, I'm going to tell you this, I much prefer being on the other side of the table than being on the political side. You guys have tough jobs, politicians, you know, it's a thankless job for a lot of times, but the things that you guys can do to make a difference in your community is the rewarding part. I found that from my part, and I've been a township superintendent, Grand Blank Township, for the past four years, or a little over four years. I still get to do that same thing, but I don't have the politics involved. And quite frankly, I love making an impact in the community, but I don't particularly care for the politics. So this worked out very well for me. I've had a tremendous amount of success in there, down there for the last four years. Took what I learned from here over six years, especially when it comes to township governance, and applied it down there. I've got a different board than the board that hired me. And the board that hired me, and there's four of those changed out in the last election, and we're still accomplishing a lot. The Grand Blank Township obviously is a growing area. We've revamped some things that have made a tremendous amount of difference, saved millions of dollars in the process. Lot of it had to do with unfunded liabilities. And then some of the things were just really encouraging the board to adopt more policies that helped us stay focused and really try to get the work of the people done. And I'm very proud of my accomplishments down there for the last four years. And, you know, it's not like I was looking for work. I don't have resumes out, but obviously, when Randy announced his retirement, there was really only one position that, you know, that I was interested in pursuing, and for obvious reasons, y'all know that my wife and I are Ubers, and we're displaced Ubers right now downstate. I've got tremendous opportunity down there. We've got tremendous opportunities for growth. I still have work to do. But again, this opportunity came up, and that's what piqued my interest, to take a look and say, man, if it's Marquette Township, you know, whether this works out or it doesn't work out, I think most of you know that we intend to be back here at retirement anyway. So we'll be here one way or another, just this one might be quicker than the other one. And with that, I mean, that's kind of my background, you know, you know, we're obviously, we're Marquette Township folks, we're Marquette folks, and we love the UP. Since I left four years ago, we're back here generally once a month for a long weekend. I think the longest time that we've gone since we left was two months without being back up here. So it's not like we've left and never looked back. We've been back here constantly. We watch your meetings, we read the paper, we watch your minutes. I mean, we're, you guys are doing a heck of a job. That's it.
Great, thank you for that. We can start with John.
I have the first question for you. Describe your understanding of charter township government and the difference from general law government, if you could.
Sure. The primary reason that Charter Township, the Charter Township Act came about was to protect bigger townships, charter townships from annexation. And there's some other things that go along with that, but when you look at general law townships and charter townships, clearly, I mean, the number of trustees, you can have seven, or should have seven with charter township. But really, the biggest thing on a charter township, you are, you become ruled by that charter, so there's a lot more things that come into play. You can have a superintendent or a manager. If you go with a superintendent, the superintendent statutorily has the A through O's, as they're generally referred to in the red book that the MTA puts out. But again, the biggest thing is protection from annexation. One of the fears of a township governance is that, you know, when you look at us as township government, and I think the most exciting thing about it is that it's the closest to the people, right? I mean, it really is the closest to the people. You're not representing any districts or anything else. Each and every one of you that gets elected to office represents the entire population of your township. When bigger cities run out of space and they need, they needed room to move, it became real easy for them to annex townships because you didn't have the wherewithal in a lot of cases to put yourself up against them. And that was, that was really the driving force behind the Charter Township Act, was so that it gave you that level of protection, so that you could protect yourselves from annexation from other municipalities.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I have the next question. The board has adopted policy governance. Describe your understanding of it and how the manager's position relates to the board.
Sure, great question. Policy governance really came about, John Carver was the guy who kind of developed it and wrote the book. He really looked at policy governance as taking an organization and really making sure that it's driven by policies, so that everybody understands their roles and responsibilities, reporting relationships. And so with policy governance, adopting policy governance means that you create a, basically, your policies that say, this is how we're going to run, and here's the things that are not acceptable to us. And so with a township manager and policy governance and township government, all of the power still resides, and this is one of the fears that a lot of people had about adopting policy governance, is that the power would shift to the manager from the elected officials. Nothing could be further from the truth. The elected officials develop those policies, and they say, here's what's okay to do, here's what we want to have happen, and then on their part, they accept however that gets carried out. They allow the manager, the wherewithal, to carry out their goals and objectives. At the same time, if the manager is not carrying them out in the same vision that the board had, then the board sets those limitations in place. It is not okay to, fill in the blank, this is what we don't like. So the greatest thing about policy governance is that it really does, people need to know how to operate in an environment, and being driven by policy does just that. When something comes up, and it comes to, whether it's on an administrative side or a legislative side, when something comes up, you look at it and say, is there policy that deals with this? If there isn't, should there be? If there is, how do we follow it? How do we carry it out? Or has it been carried out per policy? So policy governance is a very powerful tool in any organization if it's done right. And then the reporting relationship from a manager's perspective is you set it out the year in advance on how you want that reporting to come before you. You want the manager to be able to come in and say, here's the policies you have, and here's how I'm carrying them out. So on a monthly basis, you're going to see reports coming in, and that's your opportunity to really verify that the manager is following the policies as envisioned by the legislative body.
Great, thank you. Ernie, you've got the third question.
Describe the process you would follow to establish a strategic plan.
That's a great question. Strategic planning, I think, is so important, especially in government, but in any organization. One of the things about strategic planning for a governmental unit is that it's, you really need to take a look at the stakeholders that are engaged in this. So you really have to reach out, you have to find out what the residents, business owners, taxpayers of your municipality, what they want to see. And so the first part about strategic planning is, you've really got to open it up and get some feedback. You've got to get as many meetings as you can to bring folks in, so that you have the ability to say, how are we doing? How are we spending your money? Are we doing the right things? Are we doing the wrong things? What could we do differently? What can we do better? What haven't we delivered that you need in this community? And you take all that information, and it can be, you know, first off, you guys have done a great job at roads, 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 snow plowing, snow plowing, snow plowing, my taxes are too high. But then you really boil it down till you get to the things that you can impact. And then from a legislative body's perspective, you have to narrow that down to items that can reasonably be achieved, number one, that you can afford to achieve, and that you can get done in a reasonable timeframe. So if you pick your top three to five items, say, then you need to involve administration, where really, from a budgeting standpoint, what can we afford to do? Because as a budget manager, your administrative staff should be delivering some of that information to you, saying, great, you want to do this, here's what we can afford to do over the course of the next year, the three years, five years, ten years, depending on how long you want to do it. So you finally start to hammer it down, you come down to your five top items of your strategic plan, you develop a strategic agenda around them, you look at tactics, you find out who's going to be responsible for it, when are they going to be responsible for it, you put a workable timeframe together. Thing about strategic planning is you kind of work backwards. Once you know the five goals that you've chosen, you start looking, what do I need in five years? Okay, for that to happen, what has to happen in four years, three years, two years, one year? And you work it back. It's the way you make strategic planning achievable. And then you can tell whether you're on the correct timeline, or you're not on the correct timeline. The biggest thing also is the check-in and the accountability. The legislative body has this great strategic agenda, this is what we're going to accomplish in the next three years, or five years, or ten years. But then that accountability, who is supposed to carry it out? So you have to follow it up on a monthly basis. Where are we at in our strategic plan? How are we doing? Is the administrative staff carrying out what they said they were going to carry out? And then you also have to hold yourselves accountable for the parts that you want to make sure, that, you know, you have to hold staff accountable, and you have to hold each other accountable, that, you know, you accomplish those things. Strategic planning, to me, is like one of the most key factors for successful governance. And you can run without strategic planning, a lot of folks do, but when you really look at successful communities, take a look at their strategic plan, what they do from a strategic planning initiative, the successful communities know their strategic plan, they know where they're going, they know when they're going to get there, and they know who's responsible for carrying it out.
Thank you.
Okay, number four is Pete's.
As a township manager, what would be your primary goal for the next year? And how would you accomplish it? Years, five years, ten years, whatever.
Good question. The primary goal of the first year, and I can tell you this from four years ago, when I went into Grand Blank Township, obviously a bigger operation, one hundred and sixty employees, you know, considerably bigger budget. But to walk in into that environment, it doesn't matter the size, it's, you really have to take a look. It's not like I'm going to come in and say, I'm changing everything on day one. On day one, everything changes. That's not true. There's a lot of good, you guys are very, very successful here. But are there improvements that can be made? I guarantee you, there are. I have a motto, and I can certainly tell you that my staff meetings and every one of my department managers would be happy to tell you this, that we have staff meetings that only focus on continuous improvement and leadership every other week. And we focus on what can we do to be better than we were before. So it's really taking a critical look at your entire operation by department and challenging each other on a continual basis. And I have the department managers actually lead those meetings, so every other week, there's going to be a different department manager who will be talking about what they're, you know, how we can change operations. It doesn't necessarily have to be in their department. The fire chief may have ideas that apply to the Department of Public Works, or vice versa. It's more about that continuous improvement. You really have to focus on what do we do? How do we get better? How do we, you know, it's, looking at budgeting overall, when you do public sector budgeting, what's the goal of public sector budgeting? It's to maximize service delivery to taxpayers, right? And so as an administrator, when you sit down and say, what are you going to do over the next year? The very first year is, I have to take a critical look at the way we do business now. What's really working? What areas of improvement? But you really have to ask your folks, you got to involve them, you got to look at it. You also have to reach out and talk to the people who deal with us, those, the external customers and internal customers, about how are we doing? Tell me some about your issues. Do we have a good feedback? Is it easy to get on our website and provide feedback about your experience when you came into the township hall? Or is there an easy way to provide feedback to us? How do you reach out to us? How do you let us know when we're doing things right, when we're doing things wrong? Those things are really critical. But during the course of that year, the one thing, they learned it in Grand Blank Township relatively quick, in fact, one of the labor union groups challenged me on it because I sent a memo out. I started on the end of August, and on, after the first of the year, I sent out a memo saying, if I hear anybody say, it's the way we've always done it, one more time, heads are going to roll. I don't want to hear, that's the way we've always done it. You know, you do things sometimes because they're smart and they work, but if you're doing something because that's the way you've always done it, then you're doing it wrong. You got to take a critical look at every piece of your operation. And so that first year, this first thirty, sixty, ninety days, is really a very critical look at service delivery. How are we doing? Are we doing the right things? Then you have to, you know, really invest in your people and, like I said, challenge them with continuous improvement. How are you going to get better? And you challenge them with leadership. Show me how you're going to lead the organization. Show me what you can do differently. Show me how you can take us to the next level. Once you got that, trustee LaRue, then it's, you know, five years out, ten years out. That never stops. You never stop challenging yourself, you never stop challenging the staff. Because our environment changes. One thing that, you know, we're always, we do more with less. You guys are no different than a lot of municipalities in the state of Michigan. How's your revenue? Is it the same as it was in 2009, 2010? You know, what's changed since that time? Have your costs gone up? Is your, does healthcare cost more? Does fuel cost more? I mean, all those things have gone up, yet we have the same revenue stream. And that's tough. That's one of the things that government has. So we have to look at every piece of the operation critically. How can we do something that saves us money? We've revamped everything from retiree healthcare to current employees' healthcare. I mean, in the four years that I've been there, it's millions of dollars worth of savings. It's millions of dollars worth of, worth of change in an organization that size. And it really, it comes down to taking a critical look, questioning everything. You've got long-term relationships with folks who've been servicing your municipality for twenty-five years, and they're not, that there's anything wrong with them, but it's okay to put out RFPs and take a look and see if that long-term relationship should still be there. Relationships have a lot to do with it, but financially, you want to make sure that they're still delivering that service at a value that makes sense for taxpayers. So it's a long-winded answer, trustee LaRue, but, you know, the first thirty, sixty, ninety is setting those expectations, and in that first year, you make some changes and let people see that the changes are good, that you're, you're giving them the autonomy. People crave the autonomy, being able to make decisions. They crave mastery. They want to be able to master their department or the work that they have to do. And you give them those opportunities and know that they've got support from, from everybody in the organization. And then let them go, let them, let them show you what they can do, and it'll save you money, I guarantee, or improve services, one or the other.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number five is Dan's question.
Thank you for being here. Realizing that our residents are our stockholders, how would you work with them to keep them informed, educated, and get their input?
You know, it's really, it's, it's critical, and it can be as simple as, especially when you're in a small town, and, you know, I manage a community now that has forty thousand residents, yet if I'm standing in line at the Kroger, and somebody says, aren't you the superintendent? You say, absolutely, how are we doing? How are we spending your money? It's a question that I asked back from when I was a supervisor here. How are we doing? How are we spending your money? Because it's a real easy feedback, and sometimes it takes people, it sets them back, because nobody's ever asked them that question before. And that's just a real easy reach-out, but the other thing you have to do is that transparency is a communication. People have to trust government. And let's face it, there's an inherent distrust of government. Some of it was well-deserved, whether it's on the national level, the state level, I mean, people have an inherent distrust. So you start off with the deck stacked a little bit against you, but you have to go after that and fix it. You have to be able to be transparent. So I think that's one of the keys, is making sure that you reach people the way you need to be reached, and whether that's through social media, whether that's through newsletters, whether that's through a portal on your landing page that says, you know, do you have a complaint, a comment, a question? You have to make it easy for folks to give you feedback. And then what's critical is you have to follow up on it. So what I had the IT guys at Grand Blank Township do is change so that when that, somebody responds on that portal, and they want to file a complaint, or just a question, or whatever, that it goes to the appropriate person based on how they filled out the form, but it also copies me. And so that it might go to our planner, it might go to our assessor, but it always copies me as well. And then that starts the clock. We instituted a twenty-four-hour turnaround time for every consumer comment. If a resident has a question, or a business owner has a question, you have twenty-four hours to respond, and it has to be documented. That twenty-four-hour response is critical, because even if you don't have the definitive answer, if you've reached out to somebody and said, I just want to let you know that I received your concerns, I'm following up on it, I don't have the answer, it might take me an additional twenty-four or forty-eight hours, but I need you to know that we're working on it, and I need you to know that somebody will be in touch with you if you don't hear from us within that timeframe. Make sure you call me, here's my number. I think that's the most important thing, is people need to know they're heard. And sometimes you're going to give people information that they don't like, sometimes the answer is no. And sometimes that's really hard, especially from a staff member's perspective, to have to tell somebody, no. Somebody says, I want to do this, and you have to say, well, current policy says we don't do that. They just need to know the why behind it. They still might be upset, they still might think you should do it. I mean, I can give you an example from us, a group of homeowners association has private roads, they never wanted to turn them over to the county to make them county roads. Now they're deteriorated, and they need to be redone. Well, we create special assessment districts down there. If you want to do it, we'll, you know, do it over a ten-year payback period, and we'll do it. But it has to be a county road, not a, it has a public road, not a private road. They came and said, we want to, we want to redo our roads. Said, well, it's the board's policy that we don't spend public dollars on private roads. Well, we're going to get a bunch of people and sign a petition, and we're all going to come to a meeting, and we're going to complain. Like, and you can do that, and here's our meeting schedule, but I have to follow policy. The policy is this, and it's there for a reason. It's about the, extending the full faith and credit of the township for private purposes. If you did that, where would it end? So sometimes the answer is no, but you try to put the reasoning behind it, and I think that's critical, too. Let people understand why you can't do something. Oh, you guys, you never listen to us out here. We do listen to you, but it's the greater good, right, for the most number of people. And sometimes the answer is no. But it really is critical about, the communication level has to be really high. You have to have self-imposed requirements for that turnaround time. I'll return calls at seven-thirty at night from people, and they're like, what, seven-thirty at night? I'm like, right, I don't leave the office until I made sure that I've answered all the phone calls I had that day. It has to bleed back down to your staff, twenty-four hour, absolutely no excuses, somebody better have gotten back to the, to that person. And then just make sure you're being really transparent. Get it out, I mean, newsletters, social media, I mean, social media is everything. Everybody's, I mean, walk anywhere and somebody's got their phone in their hand, so I mean, social media is a big one, and it just has to be managed appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question six is from Randy.
On College of Marquette Township, do you see any changes you would recommend in your first year as township manager?
It's a, hey, you're putting me on the spot here. You know, that's a great question, and what I will say is, I've been going for four years. While I've watched what's occurred over the four years, I mean, you guys have, have done a phenomenal job, you've been keeping pace with the growth, there's some challenges, obviously, that we all experienced, whether it be, I saw Meyer file their tax tribunal case to get theirs lowered from seven million to four million, I mean, I watched all those things happen. So it's that revenue stream that we continue to have higher calls for service. So it's that revenue stream that we continue to have higher calls for service, but we have the same revenue stream. So what do you do? I mean, the, the raw materials that we have as a township are our people primarily. And it's about what you do with your people and where are they placed. So are there changes? I can't tell you definitively right now that I can, I will make some changes. I can tell you that things won't stay the same, probably as we work through it. But as far as what specific changes need to be made in Marquette Township right now, you know, I really, I have to have a much more critical insider's look at that to know. And then I also need the feedback from the board. I mean, you guys have to have the vision of where we're going and how you feel. And so even looking at it from knowing what I know from being here for six years and, and being gone for four years now, how do you guys think we're doing? I mean, in order for me to truly answer that question, I have to have the conversation. I have to have the direction from the seven individuals that are sitting up, up there that are providing the vision and the direction that you want to take the township in.
Number seven is from Dave.
Yeah, where do you see yourself in five years and where do you see the township in that same five years?
Well, depending on how this goes, or whether it doesn't. I mean, in five years, we're probably, I mean, we want back up here and that's no secret. This is home, right? And it, this has always been home for us and we want to come back up here. So if this was able to work out and, and I'm able to be here for five years, I could be, I'm so energized about where we want to go. Number one, I just love governance. I love working in government, as crazy as that sounds for some people, especially after spending thirty years in the private sector. The public sector is a little bit different. But it is so much more rewarding than the private sector ever was. Where could I take myself in five years? The growth opportunities and what the township has go hand in hand for both me personally and for the township. You guys are so poised to, to continue controlled growth. I think it's very important that you take the time to do appropriate strategic planning. I think it's very important that you take the time to, to follow your master plan and fully engage in the master planning process. And, you know, going back and we, we talked about when I'd first started in Marquette Township Government, man, if we only would have put a feeder road off of, you know, forty-one so that we could have controlled some of that traffic so we didn't have so many driveways. Right now, you guys have the opportunity for five years ahead of us. What, what can we change? What can we do? That's why I think the, the vision aspects of the legislative body and what you guys have to do. You guys are gonna grow. You've got available land. It is so crazy here even with hotel rates. I know, because I pay for hotel rates up here every month, where they've gone because the amount of tourism that's coming up here. People are embracing the lifestyle, the active outdoor lifestyle. You guys have this opportunity and all this available land. You're gonna continue to grow, but it has to be controlled growth because I don't think you want to lose the character of Marquette Township, right? I, I think that as long as the board continues to embrace strategic planning like you have and you continue to, to create that vision for the future, if I'm lucky enough to be here to help carry that out, I think that we can work together and, and do some amazing things together. I mean, it's, it's really about bringing a plan to fruition, getting that plan down and, and you tell me where you want to go and I'll help you get there. I'll show you the alternatives and I'll help you get there.
Thanks.
Thanks. I have a small follow-up. I just read yesterday that Pure Michigan may be reconsidered by the governor. The Pure Michigan funding was scrapped completely. That's gonna have a big impact on the Marquette area. I don't know how it would be in Grand Blank, how, how touristy that is from next to Traverse City. And do you see that being a challenge then for, for the state, the county?
You know, I read a lot of information on that Pure Michigan campaign and there's obviously, there's two sides to it, right? There's people who are saying they just don't see the, the ROI on the investment that, that was going into Pure Michigan campaign. And it's one of those things where it's, it's not a concrete investment. It's like making bike trails, right? I mean, what's the ROI on bike trails? Well, your, people don't pay to use bike trails, but they come and they stay and they move here. And the value of your homes, the amount of tourists that come. Grand Blank Township isn't a tourist destination by any means. That's where all the folks who are following the Pure Michigan campaign are coming from, southeast Michigan. You know, everyone's heading north. And it's that thing where the Pure Michigan campaign, anytime that you can tout what's going on, the lifestyle. I mean, there's people who are still in southeast Michigan are like, "The UP, oh my God." Like, "That's like a twelve-hour drive." And like, "Well, no, it's, it's a six-hour drive and it's really pretty easy." You know, it's, it's that overcoming the barriers. I think the, the Pure Michigan campaign, I believe, has had a good ROI. If you're driving on I-75, whatever, you see those billboards, right? You hear the ads. Will it have an impact on it? You guys are a tourist destination. I think you'll continue to grow. I think it's so fantastic to be a biking community. We've always been lifelong bikers, right? And to move into an area like ours, there's no bike trails in our entire community. It's thirty-six, you know, square mile block of, you know, it's got like one mile of bike trail in it. We've been trying to work on grants to get it, but it's really hard and not everybody embraces it or understands what can happen if you do things like that, that will, will create an opportunity for somebody who wants to come. It's not just the tourism, it's the folks who will come and live in your community because they get a chance to experience the lifestyle. So I think that, you know, I like the investment in Pure Michigan. I hope they reinstate and put money into it because if they don't, then you're gonna have to do a real good job of, of blowing your own horn. And sometimes that's uncomfortable doing, but man, you guys have so much to offer here. It's just, it, it's just crazy. The, the things, the, the active lifestyle that, that you can offer, especially for young folks, it's what they're looking for, you know? And I, and I think, or if you start looking for the next ten years, twenty years down the road for Marquette Township, twenty years from now, that's why I said it's so important to master plan. Twenty years from now, you'll be, if you left and came back, you'd be so surprised at what this community is gonna look like. Let's make sure we, you know, that we focus on keeping that good, you know, UPR vibe, nice, small-town, upper Michigan friendly, you know, kind of thing. And I don't think you guys, if you spend as much time in southeast Michigan as we do, where, you know, you get up here and you're just walking through downtown Marquette and people are like, "Hi, how you doing?" We, we walked, you know, Presque Isle this morning. Everyone's like, "Hello, hey, how you doing?" If you do that downstate, people are, you freak them out. It's about, it's such a cool environment. I mean, this is such a cool place to live. I think you guys are gonna be successful with just, you know, controlled growth and, and make sure you control it. But yeah, I mean, you, you might need to invest a little bit in, in your own marketing campaign.
Thank you. Number eight is my question. Why should we hire you?
Wow, what a great question. The, I give you a lot of reasons why you should hire me. And obviously, you guys know my background. You know what I did when I was here for six years. I'm a huge proponent of Marquette Township and Marquette in general. But Marquette Township, I just, you know, again, the quality of life, the, what we can do, the things that we can accomplish together. And you look at my background, I have a, I have a history of getting things done. I have a history of making, turning things into reality. We can control our expenses. I've got a history of that. We can move forward on strategic plan and get things done. When we first started, you know, two thousand nine, if you recall, that first strategic planning process and we developed our strategic agenda and we put our items that we were gonna get, we put it on a banner and we hung it behind it ourselves so that we could look at it and say, "We're gonna be accountable for what we said we're gonna get done." I'm a big proponent of that. I think you have to not only plan, but you have to tell people, "This is what we're gonna do. This is how we're gonna do it. Here's the tactics. Here's the timeline." And then you get it done. And I got a track record, I can do that. And that's the difference. I mean, it's, it's about, you know, you tell me where you want to go and I'm gonna help you. Look at the alternatives and I'm gonna help you get there. And that, that first and foremost, number one, I'm a huge proponent for Marquette Township. One of the first start-stop continues that I did with my staff down there is like, kind of three sixty-degree coaching, right? "Hey, you guys, I coach you up, you coach me." I said, "So start, stop, continue." I leave the room and a staff meeting and I say, "Here's three columns. Start, stop, continue. What should I start? What should I stop? What should I continue doing?" The only thing they put in the stop was quit talking about Marquette Township. Clearly, I'm a big proponent of, of not only the lifestyle, but the governance model and the things that we accomplished up here. And, and I think I can help you all carry that out.
Great, thank you. Any follow-up questions? Anybody else wants to ask? Randy, go ahead.
Yes, I got two follow-up questions. Dennis, what do, what do you envision in a smaller township like us for legacy planning? Like for, like staff, staff positions and maybe cross-training and different things? I know you got a bigger staff where you're at, but what do you envision like, do we, for like backup and positions and things?
You know, I think that's critical. Clerk Retire, it's, it's, no matter how big or small your staff is, in fact, it's probably even more critical in a smaller staff because you don't have as many people underneath in that hierarchy that can help get you through. And it could be as simple as a health issue or somebody who just ends up leaving employment for whatever reason. You know, your taxpayers, your residents, again, we talk about how do you develop a budget? You, it's all about how do you increase the service delivery to taxpayers? You can't lose a critical component and have somebody drop out and say, "Well, we're just not gonna be able to carry out assessing functions or we just can't carry out, you know, planning functions until we get this position filled." So it's critical that you figure out ways to, to make people not only have a broader base knowledge, but also, you know, encourage people to do it just because in a smaller operation, even just answering phone calls or dealing with somebody who walks in or you're standing in a store's line and somebody, "Oh, you work for the township. Can I ask you a question? You know, I had an issue with water and I didn't understand why." The more knowledge that you can provide folks that they can answer that question, I think it's critical. So a lot of it has to do with even just having people cross-trained by spending some time in the department and then making sure that if you have to create a cheat sheet at first from a department, if you have somebody answering the phone, "I've got a question, but it's about my water bill." "Oh, that person's out in right now. Can you call back? Or we can have somebody call you back in a couple hours or she's on vacation for two weeks." That's the wrong answer. You have to be able to answer those questions. So I think it's, it's, I mean, it just becomes so readily apparent that everybody, if you are in charge of that department, you want that kind of customer service level. So you should be also coming up with a plan to reach out to your colleagues to say, "I need somebody who, who can understand and who can cross those lines and be able to answer those questions or to be able to cross-train." So you just never know. I mean, life's fickle, right? And you just never know if somebody leaves or, you know, just illness or feeling vacation. So I think it's something you work on instantly.
Okay, and then my second follow-up is, how do you envision Marquette Township in the region? How do you look at our relationships with the adjoining municipalities?
You know, it's, if you recall, two thousand nine, even when I first got involved with Marquette Township Government, and it's still somewhat, I mean, it's, you know, between the city and the township and that exists everywhere. It exists in Grand Blank between the city and the township. I mean, there's always this struggle about municipalities. How are you getting along with the county? I've watched the things that you guys have done with creating relationships. And hats off to Planner McCarthy because I know he's done a lot of the work with some of the things, making sure that we, that you guys have gotten the grants, you know, working with MDOT, working with the county, working with the road commission. But all, y'all as the elected officials, that, that, it starts with you. You have to be able to have those relationships. People have to see you as a resource, that we're all in this together. But obviously, you know, when you look at every region, but even you just take Marquette County for example, if somebody was looking to locate a business in Marquette Township, but we just don't have the available land or resource or whatever, would we be better off to say, "Sorry, we can't help you?" Or are we better off to say, "We can accommodate you, but let me introduce you to somebody over in the city or let me introduce you to somebody in Sands Township or Nagani Township" that you may be able to locate, that, you know, could accommodate your idea for your business? It, it's better to think regionally and really make sure you have those cooperative relationships. First and foremost, you protect your community. You want to tout your community, but you do that because nothing breeds success like success. A successful city of Marquette makes you more successful. A successful county makes you more successful. A successful central UP region makes Marquette Township more successful. So we can't be as parochial as we sometimes would like to be. You know, it's easy to get, your feelings bruised a little bit when you, you know, you lost a challenge with somebody like that. But man, it, it won't help you in the long run. You, you really have to, you gotta have that idea in your head that we're all in this together, that we, we want business here if you really truly want to be successful. And I, I think that, you know, from my track record when I was here before, in fact, just before I left here, I got a call from a county commissioner in Genesee County, just to chat before, minutes before I left to come here. And I, I think it's so important that you stay in tune with your, with your county officials. It's really important that you have, you bridge that gap, that you make sure. And you gotta be, you gotta be somewhat of a cheerleader. You, you gotta make sure that, you know, you, you, you talk up the whole region, not, you know, just your, your own municipality. You talk up, "Man, what a great place. What a, what a great place. This is a great place to do business. In fact, in the township, here's what we have available for you, which is really great. But just coming here is, is really great." And I think those relationships will pay dividends way into the future.
Okay, thank you Dennis.
How would you approach trying to get more businesses in Marquette Township? I mean, right now, we're at, we've got enough gas stations, we've got enough grocery stores, but clothing stores and stuff like that. We're just sitting here waiting, like waiting for paint to dry, you know, for something to happen. And the biggest complaint a lot of people say around here now is, "We need a clothing store. We need a stores like, you know, like we used to have." Is there anything that you've done downstate that would help us up here?
And so you're really talking about, you know, how do you become an economic driver, right? It's about economic development. When I first got down in Grand Blank Township, one of the first few months I was there, I was kind of going through cleaning out my office from the prior superintendent and I came across a thing from two thousand seven where they had this vision of creating a technology village. It was, it was envisioned as like an R&amp;D park and it would be an economic driver for, for the whole thing. So I read through it and, you know, they started in two thousand seven. They had a meeting, they had like a hundred and twenty stakeholders come in and talk about how cool that would be, what impact that would have on the region because they're really lacking, you know, restaurant, retail jobs. We outsourced jobs. We, we send eighteen thousand people a day, you know, out of our township to go to work in other areas. How can we get that here? When you talk about shopping experiences, people are going elsewhere. They go to Oakland County, they leave. So how do we keep that here? So I read through this thing and so then I asked the board, "What happened?" Well, obviously, two thousand eight happened, you know, the recession hit. They lost thirty-five percent of their taxable value. I mean, gone. They were cutting everything. So they stopped thinking about economic development. They focused on preservation. So by the time I got there in two thousand fifteen, we were still at eighty percent of the taxable value, but we'd grown an additional, I mean, six or seven hundred residential, new residential housing permits. So the calls for service were up, our revenue was way down. Man, how do you even start thinking about economic development, right? So I took that plan and I looked at it. There was an area of a couple hundred acres and it's down the south end of, of the township down there. And I approached one of the property owners and had a conversation with him about forming a public-private partnership. "Let's partner on this thing and let's flesh this plan out. Let's see if we can actually create this vision that was started, you know, in two thousand seven." He was reluctant at first and there was another development group that owned a parcel in that as well. Eventually got him to the table and agreed. The board, we formed a, a public-private partnership and we had a assessment, a market assessment study done with a vision of what could we do with this two hundred acres of prime property with I-75 frontage? The offshoot of doing that was, we partnered with them and created this vision and then based upon that market assessment, hired a big company out of Baltimore who does this nationally with a tremendous amount of- nationally with a tremendous amount of credibility. They did surveys. They came back and they said, "Here's what you could build with 100% certainty. There's a market." And they created an area that includes R&amp;D, light industrial, kind of a downtown area with restaurants, retail, traditional office space, a lot of residential loft-style living, but really that I-75 frontage. And they put a conceptual plan together based upon that market assessment. Well, I've been meeting now with the developers. This, you know, took time. Over the course of a couple years, we finished the market assessment, you know, towards the end of 2016. But it's been a tremendous amount of work and then put it together. The last piece of that puzzle was forming a DDA. They didn't have one. So we started that process, finalized it in May of 2019, created a DDA with a TIF plan around it. We were lucky in that we were able to keep Magna Electronics. They make all the backup cameras for cars. If you've got a backup camera, it came from Magna Electronics. We were able to keep them and retain 600 jobs. They built a new $50 million plant right inside the DDA. So we hurried up and got the DDA done so I could capture that taxable value. This DDA started off being really funded. Now we've got a developer there from out east that we're putting together the final plans together, and it's going to have restaurants, retail, you know, clothing, corporate headquarters, light industrial. We've got people already lining up who want to go in from the light industrial side, two firms. It's about creating your opportunities, Pete. It's about finding available property and willing, you have to be willing to think public-private partnerships to help market yourself and market opportunities. You guys have a lot of available land. Is there areas here that we can do something like that with? Is there something within the DDA that you can create a DDA plan, a TIF plan around it to get a capture that you can, you know, that you can really go after something like that? We put a plan together. When I met with the developers a couple of weeks ago, and the guys that flew in from the East Coast, I sat down and they say, "Well, you know, what could the DDA really do?" And I say, "Right off the bat, we're willing to put water and sewer through there. That's $4 million, but you guys have to put in an $8 million road, knowing that it's going to get turned over to the county when you're done. But in exchange, we're going to put in that $4 million of water and sewer infrastructure to make this happen." So we just, not only have we shaved a year and a half to two years off the plan because we've done the market assessment, we've created a conceptual plan, we changed the zoning so that it's ready to go, so you don't have any of those hurdles, but the DDA is ready to go and will take care of those capital fees, will take care of putting the means in, and show them really what the DDA, when they put their plan together, they'll put, you know, a million and a half towards even landscaping and streetscaping and signage. I mean, you have to create your own opportunity. You create this vision, and then you work with somebody to sell it. I mean, that property sold for $4 million, the two parcels. Again, we didn't have like, you know, a dog in the hunt as far as like getting that property sold, but these people were willing to work with us to let us change the zoning to do those things. So there are things you can do. You have to be your own economic developer. You know, you guys work with economic development people up here and the way down there, economic development people, and I hate to say this, but they're really good at creating jobs in economic development. But sometimes you think how frustrating, like, "What about the jobs that I really want? This is what we need here. We want some, we want some living wages so we can keep our kids here." You can create those things. You just have to be creative. You gotta think outside the box, and you gotta have willing participants. You gotta find property owners or developers who are willing to work with you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Ernie?
Being a township superintendent, as you are, and looking how that really lays out within a township, where the supervisor is there, but the superintendent is there. How would you see being manager being relationship to the supervisor, looking at what you're doing now and what you would be doing then? How would you say that would work out?
No, that's an excellent, excellent question, Ernie. Treasurer Johnson, the, you know, what's the biggest difference between a superintendent and manager? Superintendent, statutorily, again, the A through O's are the superintendents, right? You're statutory, the state of Michigan in their infinite wisdom said, "If you guys want to hire a superintendent, then statutorily, he's responsible for these items versus the supervisor." If you hire a manager, it's the same thing as long as it's whatever's been given to him in writing. The difference is that the supervisor has the ability to withdraw some of those things. I want to be the personnel manager. I want to be, you know, fill in the blank, whatever. Does it make a difference in how you operate the day-to-day operations? You're still charged with day-to-day operations. The, you know, what you don't have is the statutory authority behind you to make those decisions. So if, it's just, it's a difference. I mean, if the elected official wants to take on some of those responsibilities, it just has to be in writing. So from my standpoint, as far from being a manager, it's got to be in writing. I need to know what I'm responsible for and what I'm not responsible for. I'll take on all the accountability you want to give me, but don't hold me accountable if you don't let me do the job, right? And I think that's the biggest thing, is it's just got to, the expectations have to be very clear and it has to be spelled out. And then I don't think it's all that much different.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
How about some business questions a little bit? Looking at your application, there were some items that were missed. I don't know if, because of the circumstances you had when you completed it, they aren't critical, but there were some blank spots, one of which was not getting all of the reference people that we were kind of looking for. Part of that was confidentiality that was imposed, which was fine because we had that from other candidates, too. I don't know if it's important to the board to have, we were looking at maybe members of your board as a follow-up reference. This is kind of after the fact, but I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to say whether or not they care if we have any more references. We had an engineer, two engineers and an attorney, I believe, and you and I talked about having a board member or some of your staff. So I just want to give the board an opportunity in case they felt they wanted different perspectives on references. Does that matter to anybody? Anything you want to?
Some of the reference that we have, he's been here before. You know, he's been supervisor, he's gone out. And that's what you really like for a person. I mean, we take our employees and our lead people, we send them for education. Well, in some cases, he went out for additional education because he went to work for Grand Blanc. That's a bigger thing. Lots of things you can see, what we could use up here. I don't know, I don't.
That's fine.
It's just, I would just like to see, we got our malls up there, and you know, you read things, and malls going out, and then you read some more, or something else about the malls are coming back. We just want stores in the mall, if they're going to be here, to be benefit to the township. We want any business up to be a benefit. We don't want to just fill up a lot and fill up a store. You know, and that's why my question is, how do we go vote for something like that?
Anybody else? Dave?
As opposed to additional references, I would, I would think that in consideration of the confidentiality up until today's meeting, and, but then you take a look at his former association with Marquette Township, I would hope that before we consider any kind of a recommendation with respect to this, that we do it at a later meeting so that we have an opportunity for the residents to weigh in, because I'm sure they all have an opinion out there. They've dealt with you for six years. It would be nice to hear some of those opinions. And I would hope we, for that reason, I would hope we would hold off on a decision recommending it one way or the other until we hear some, get some feedback from them. And I'm saying not forever. I'm saying at least put off that, any decision to recommend one way or the other until at least this next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I forgot to say that, and it didn't end up on next week's agenda either, that we would schedule a work session or special meeting like we did last time for the other interviews, sometime after next week, to sit down and talk about this then. Rather than, we weren't going to make a decision today. I was, I should have prefaced the meeting with that, but that was the format we had covered before. And had our discussion, asked our questions, and then had the follow-up meeting afterward. So we will put that on Tuesday's agenda to schedule a follow-up meeting, special or work session, whatever. Special meetings are better.
More discussion at that time?
Right. Probably a special meeting so that we can make a motion.
Just a reminder to everybody, there was a previous candidate that was proposed, and there were no stipulation about any such goings-on before.
Not following you.
It was community input.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Votes were taken.
The vote was, the vote, or the motion was made without any other previous discussion about what's been proposed today.
Yeah, it's our decision. The person's our employee. That's, you know, I mean, they've worked for the township, too, but it's our decision.
I don't understand the, why you would treat another candidate differently.
Well, he just asked the question.
I guess I do understand why you want to treat another candidate differently, but I don't approve of it.
Ernie?
I'm not following this at all. Getting back to what we're talking about for references and that, maybe I had too much of my background in hiring people and that. There's always been some references from wherever and that, too. So I don't know if that caused you any problems with giving some of those references or not. I have no idea in that. We have a lot of information in front of us. I think that it's a board decision if we want to follow up for any requested references from other individuals. Maybe because I've interviewed so many people in my lifetime, hired a lot of people, that I look at everything that I possibly can look at before I make a decision and that, too. So, and looking at the three individuals there, I looked at that and I says, "Okay, we've got good references there." But there are individuals who have, one way or another, have some contact with the township, financial contact with Morawski, and that is, creates a problem for me at that point in time, too. Because you don't know what they're going to say, this and that, when you say two engineers and an attorney. So they've done work for the township. I have no idea who they are, what their relationship with their, with given township at all, but I just look at, try to look at everything I possibly can before I make a final decision and that, too.
I just brought it up because most times when you're interviewing an applicant, you want to talk with either their previous employer or work people or their boss or somebody. And we didn't have that opportunity here. So if it's not important to anybody, that's fine. Dan, I think you were first.
Yeah, I would like to say we know the candidate. We've, we've worked with the candidate for many years. We just had a great interview with the candidate. In my opinion, he scored extremely high remark, or high grades with me, and for that reason, I would like to make a motion that we offer him the job.
Motion.
We need a second before we can go.
Ernie had his hand up.
No, okay, no.
Were you supporting it?
No, no, I will not.
All right. I'll support it for discussion.
All right, then you're going to have to wait, Dave, till we... Okay, go ahead, Dan. What's, any follow-up?
We've been, we've been discussing this for a long time. We are, we are, there's, there's no, we have our manager that's willing to stay for some time. I think we owe it to Mr. Lemich to give him an answer so he can plan on what he is going to do. He's got a lot to do to make this work if he's willing to move up here and take the job. So I think the sooner that we can get this moving, the better. I don't think there's anybody out there that are his present employers that would give him a bad mark. We can, we can still look into that, but, you know, he's got different qualifications that he has to meet, to take, to get employment here first. So I think we should just offer the position to him today and make, take a vote on it.
Okay, John?
If this motion was to pass, it doesn't end all the discussion that will need to take place before it would become a reality. What you're doing here is just testing whether or not that a job would be offered, if I understand the motion correctly, would be offered. There's a great deal of other discussion that needs to go on before it would become real.
Reality.
That's the point I'm trying to make as a supporter of the motion. I don't have any problem with it, and I think that it isn't any different than the motion that was made previously on another candidate. In fact, it's very much the same. So roll call vote.
Okay. Dave, you had your light on, but does it pertain to this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess to clarify my comments, and the reason I made the comment was in lieu of additional background or references, because there is a history and an association with the township of some six years, that I would be comfortable, is what I was trying to express, comfortable getting some feedback from the residents that have worked with him for the past six years. We didn't have that luxury with the other candidates. We were going strictly by references and resumes. So that was my entire intention with that, with that suggestion.
I've talked to several employees.
Dan, just a minute. Everybody else has got their turn. Ernie, go ahead.
Two things. I think as audit contents, we need to follow protocol all the way down the line. If we don't follow protocol, the township may have a problem in that. Because in the past, we went through and interviewed everyone, and then we took this stance of having a special meeting to review everything and that. So we have a protocol in front of us. If you follow through on this here, we have a problem. It could be a legal problem in that some of the candidates that were turned down say, "Hey, that was a set-up deal right off the beginning because we're not following protocol all the way down the line." Step by step, on every candidate, it's be the same thing. No difference on any of them and that. So that's something you have to look at, and being a board member, I kind of can't support this because it is different than we've done with the other candidates, and we can't move in that direction and that. The other thing is, we have on your agenda for next week, if you look at that, we don't even know what the contract's going to look like. Have no idea at all and that. And those are things that we have to work out beforehand. And if you haven't done a lot of interviewing and hiring and that, and working for different companies that have done it, then you have a problem because you don't have the background. If you haven't had, not have the training or the classes or the seminars in doing all this, you just don't move forward like this. You have certain steps you have to take. One of them, as I brought up in the meeting we had two weeks ago, protocol, following that all the way down the line, so we do not get into any legal problems and that, anywhere and that. That's all I have to say.
Attorney here could ask a question.
Randy?
Yes, that's going to be my question. I don't want to put Roger on the spot, but I guess the first question I have is, is this appropriate for the board to do this at this meeting, for one thing? And I don't have a problem with the protocol because, quite frankly, we can do what we'd like to do. He's our, the manager is our employee. We can do what we'd like to do, but I just don't want to see us not do anything not legal. So that's, I guess Roger's...
...legal right to proceed in either manner. There is a considerable amount, however, of things that haven't even been discussed. So the best you could do at this meeting at this point would be to make some type of a conditional offer because you need to nail down, for example, salary, benefits, and you could make any type of offer, if you wish to even go that road this soon, subject to reference checks or any other conditions that the board might impose. to reference checks, or any other conditions that the board might impose. So is there a legal impediment to moving forward per se? Not really, but you have a lot of practical issues that have not been nailed down or addressed at this point.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, John.
The legal issues that have been brought to our attention are the issues that I'm talking about that would take place following some kind of an offer. You make the offer, and then you negotiate the rest of it with time. Everybody who applied for this position had the right to request from the township the manager's position, the manager's duties, and the manager's salary. That's what they were applying for. They were applying under those conditions and making their name available. All that's being offered now, as I understand the motion, was to make an offer to the candidate based on what we've heard today. All those other things will take place following that, and none of it is tied down and shouldn't be tied down as a condition for making it.
Um, the point I was trying to make is that any hiring process includes an offer and an acceptance before you have a contract per se. At this point, there hasn't really been enough discussion for there to be an acceptance by any candidate, because there's been no, no, no discussion or nailing down of what the terms of employment would be. Having said that, you can make some type of a motion that expresses a desire to enter into an employment agreement, but it would have to be strictly conditional, based upon a consensus on references, perhaps on input from the community, on further, certainly on fringe benefits and salary, and the terms of what the employment will be, because at this point, you have nothing that can be accepted. So the motion, again, I can't emphasize strongly enough, would have to be a conditional type of motion, subject to further follow-up on a number of issues. If it's phrased in that manner, I see no particular legal concerns.
I have no objections, I mean, I would, yes, I'd like to phrase it as a conditional offer, where we can then check references, we can then negotiate with Mr. Lemata as far as salary and everything else goes. I think we've, we've gone far enough with this. We have one hell of an excellent candidate sitting right here before us, and it's my opinion that we're not going to find anybody that can fit into our system and take us into the next five or 10 years any better than Mr. Lemata.
The second part of my follow-up question involved the salary, and that has to be negotiated, obviously.
Absolutely.
But there was a statement on cover letter that I was concerned with, and Dennis was making some references about his previous position and how his salary was constructed. And he was hoping that Marquette Township could consider something similar, and then he said if not, he would understand and return to Marquette as a retiree. So I, I guess because the request on the application was for higher than the amount the township put in its parameters, where, where do you fit with, where, how much leeway have we got? Obviously, salary and benefits are a big part of why people accept jobs, and if you're coming into this with the idea that it's going to be, with the knowledge that it may be less than what you're willing to accept, where does the township fit into? We may not have a lot of wiggle room. And while we could have a special meeting and discuss whatever options or contracts we want to offer, what you're requesting is more than what we have presented, so we need to know what the deal breaker is, I guess. Maybe that's not the right phrase, but...
That's okay.
Where do we, you know, how much leeway have you got? As much as you want to come back here, you've made that very clear, your, your question is much higher than what our answer is.
Have an answer to that question?
At least right now.
If we, do you want to negotiate right now?
No, 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 no.
Um, let, let me, maybe this will help. I'm a member of the International City Managers Association, I'm a member of the Michigan Municipal Executives, and I can tell you that, I know you guys haven't hired a lot of managers recently, because the last one was here for 17 years, but as members of those organizations, most managers' contracts are negotiated outside of, you know, you guys have a vision of where you want to go and what it looks like from the market, right? So typically, I have a contract in mind that is based upon one that is a part of my organization, that I'm a part of, is International City Managers Association. That's pretty standard in some of the requirements. It follows pretty much what you have for your current manager's contract. It's, you know, where you want to go, or where you, who you think your competitive managers are. If you're going to bring in a seasoned manager, there's going to be a certain amount of expectations versus if you're bringing in somebody who is not as seasoned. If you look at, like the, I'll give you the city of Escanaba, for example, there, they ran a manager search because the manager accepted a position down in Florida and was leaving. He's been there for two years, he decided to go. The reason he was leaving is because they didn't pay him enough money. They came back and offered him, they, I think it was $125,000 a year to stay in Escanaba, and he changed his mind and stayed in Escanaba. It's about, what's the market paying, and where do you guys want to fit in that market and that negotiation? I mean, you guys should know what your absolute best offer is. You want to put it together in a conditional letter. It's how we would do it, no different than why I negotiate. All of our department directors are independents. When we hire somebody, we have a contract that we follow, and again, it's based on the International City Managers Association recommendations. It's been vetted by Labor Council. We use Bodman, so you guys are familiar with Labor Council. It's, and there's just certain parameters in there that I think are negotiable, that I think are worth negotiating, and I'd be happy to negotiate. Typically, what we do is, we'll send somebody a conditional offer, and we'll say, we're going to offer you a conditional offer of employment based upon a successful background check, because we run criminal background checks on everybody, because we think that's important for you to know, and I think I would recommend that you guys do the same thing. And then you, either you put in a salary in there, or benefits package, or however you like to put in your conditional offer and say, this is the conditional offer that we'd like to make for you, but it's all contingent upon reference check, background check, criminal background check, whatever you want to put in there. That's how I've done it with everyone I've hired down there as far as from a director's level. I think it would be a good consideration for you guys to do the same thing. I agree that maybe you do want to wait and have time to all have the opportunity to have a conversation, and if you want to weigh in with public. I got 12 phone calls from residents here that, you know, I wasn't candidate number four, apparently, because they all knew who, who I was, but I got 12 phone calls from people so excited that they heard that I was maybe coming back. Three of them this morning. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's good if you want to check more references. If you want to talk to the supervisor down in Grand Blank Township, his name is Scott Bennett, I'll give you his cell phone number. By all means, you should all call him and have a conversation with him. I'm not afraid about any of the background check stuff, but I do think that you should have the opportunity as a board to sit down, talk about where you want that offer to be, and then present it as a conditional offer of employment for my consideration, and authorize Roger to negotiate, or however you guys want to do it, a committee of some of you, and I'd be happy to, to start that process at any time. But typically, I mean, it's a, it's a good way, and I think maybe you guys do need, just from listening to the, to the board, you guys maybe do need to take that time to, to, you know, have that consideration and put that together, and maybe you do want to check references, or you want to run my background first, you know, whichever you want to do. I mean, I'm okay either way.
Go ahead, John.
The maker of the motion has indicated he wants to amend the motion to a conditional offer as outlined by the attorney. The supporter of that motion concurs. So the motion before you now is as amended.
Did you get that?
Yeah, it's a conditional offer and employment to the candidate. It's conditional.
Okay. Bernie?
I have no problem with the candidate. I'm just, the procedure that's followed, I just don't agree with it at all, and that. I think we need to follow a set procedure and go through it with all candidates and that. We start changing things, and it's different than what we put out as advertisement. Wherever we went, all of a sudden, because of the changes in the advertisement, could we get more candidates in? Dan, you said he's the best candidate out there. Maybe because I've interviewed hundreds and hundreds of candidates, I have some idea that you don't know what's out there until they start coming in the door and that, so...
Bernie, I said, in my opinion, he's the best candidate out there. He's definitely the best candidate that we've seen here, and the last time you interviewed anybody was a long time ago, so this is today.
It makes no difference. The interviews process still goes all the way through. It doesn't change in that, but...
To differ with you, it does.
Doesn't change.
Dan, this is Bernie's time.
Interviewing process does not change. I would recommend that you start attending some of the MTA conference sessions on interviewing and some of that stuff as to what's going on in other ways, and it's no different now or 20 years ago, 25 years ago, when I was doing it and that. You still have to follow the same procedures and that. You start changing midstream, you end up with other problems and that. So that's my feeling on that. I just don't care for the procedure at all in that. I expected, as I said in our last meeting, that to follow the same protocol all the way down the line. I guess some people don't agree with that, don't want to follow protocol and that, so that's where I stand at this point in time.
Dave?
Well, I think we're getting ready to back ourselves into a corner here. It's 50/50 whether this motion passes or not. If it doesn't pass, then we are looking at, the only way we could consider him is if we rescind the motion, which takes a two-third majority. You can't make them another offer unless you rescind the motion. So I think we're backing ourselves into a corner here for sake of a couple days to schedule another meeting to sit down and talk about it.
But then the only way to prevent that from happening now is if the motion maker...
Withdrew.
Withdrew.
A couple days.
Go ahead, Dan.
The motion maker, in lieu of what Mr. Lemata was saying, I, I do think, yes, we should have, we should be able to make him an offer. We're not at that point. I agree. I, I think that we would have enough votes to hire him, and I think we will have enough votes to hire him in a few days. I would like to, I would like to call a special meeting to get this moving forward, and so that we can, at that point, make an offer with a salary with it, so we know what we're talking about, and he knows what we're talking about, so he can accept it or, or not. So I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, for clarification, maybe I didn't say it correctly. We will schedule at Tuesday's meeting, a special meeting, to have this follow-up discussion, which is exactly what we did before. During the meeting, as the trustee or the treasurer mentioned, we will discuss the status of the manager's contract. If you remember, I brought the contract to you saying, this is what we have in place. Do you want to change it? Do you want to amend it? Do you want to leave it the way it is? So nobody really had anything to say, so we brought it up and put it back on the agenda for Tuesday. So we will have a better chance to figure out what the salary is, what the benefits are. Do we follow the policies that are in place now? Managers, if you remember, the manager's benefit plan mirrors what the rest of the staff has. He is our employee. We can do with him whatever we want, and that was the question I asked you. Do you want to continue that, or do you want to make changes? This is the time to do it, before we have to provide an offer. So, once we have that discussion, if you want to leave it the way it is, that's fine, but we all have to decide. It's not up to me or, or the current manager. So we'll have the discussion about the contract, figure out what we want to do. We'll have a special meeting. At some point, we can have it Wednesday morning if you want, figure out what we want to do with the candidate. That's the process that I was envisioning. So go ahead.
I just had one other thing to say about the contract, is when all the candidates applied for the position, they were privy to what the contract was. So if any changes are made, they, they just can't be made other than maybe a salary. We've got to be careful what we change, because that's what they, that's what they came in at, applying for the job, knowing what the contract was.
Well, the contract was not given to any of the candidates. That was between us and Randy.
No, the contract is a public document, available on call, but I, you need to do one other thing here before you move on. The maker of the motion has indicated he wants to withdraw the motion. It would be normal to ask the supporter if the supporter withdraws his support. Is that what you're asking?
Thank you, yes.
The answer is yes.
Bernie, you had your hand up?
The contract, yes, is public, but we have never discussed it. We did not share really officially with the candidates. If they found out what it was, that's fine, but it was never discussed with the candidates anywhere in that. If you go back in time, we've been talking about doing something with the candidate, with the contract. We have not moved in that direction at all in that. The supervisor provided us all with a copy for us to look at, suggested changes, whatever it is, and we have not had a meeting for discussion on that at this point in time. So that's the next step we have to go in that.
Pete?
You know, we can go on until midnight if you want. If consensus is you want to have a meeting, let's have the meeting and get moving, rather than, you know, just keep going on.
Go ahead, John.
One more time, I'm going to remind this board that a motion was made on another candidate, and at no time did anybody stand up and scream about protocol. They voted for that candidate to get, be offered the job.
That's correct.
And, and there was no effort made to talk about what the salary would be or another issue. So all of a sudden, protocol becomes a big ass thing.
All right.
He's absolutely right. We took a vote.
But we're not going to get carried away here.
But okay, but we took a vote.
And I, I call to your attention, there's a difference being applied here. Protocol wasn't being followed then either, not when you do what you're doing tonight. And one more thing before I'm through in here. I know all about the many times that you sat on a very wide board at the college. Not something you did as an individual, all by yourself.
John, we are not going to do individual attacks.
I'm not, that's not an attack, that's a fact that I want known.
That's fine, it has nothing... It's fine, it has nothing to do with what's happening here.
I know, but I, we've had our fill of all the protocol.
I'm asking for your immediate resignation for harassment to a board member.
That's not harassment.
It is too.
That's calling a fact to fact.
All right, all right.
We need a five minute break.
That's enough.
Five minute break.
Next meeting, I'm splitting you guys up. That's it. Next meeting, that's it. We're finished with this.
I've got too many things going on in my life. I don't need this right now. If you don't like what I do, there's the door. I've been on this board for 12 years. I had eight years beforehand here. I've had over 30 years in the township. People thought I was doing something. Now, you've been here a short time, now you're criticizing everything I do.
I'm not criticizing everything he's.
John!
I've had enough of it, John.
John, stop. Ernie?
I've had enough.
I know, I know. Just, just stop.
I need a break.
We're here to do the business, Ernie, we're here to do the business of the township.
I've got too much. Go on, I don't need this.
Sorry, Dennis.
Welcome to the U.P., eh?
Um, there's my agenda.
Government, that's all. Nobody likes to see the sausage made, Pete, but it's all process.
Well, there's no motion, so that's, so that's not there. We can move on, I guess.
That's what I was just looking at. Public comment is next unless somebody has a motion. Okay, Roger?
Just one very brief comment on the contract issue. Keep in mind that your contract is strictly with your current township manager. That contract was scheduled to end December 31, was then extended by subsequent board action. So, this board is not bound by the terms in that contract and is free to include additional terms or delete terms as the parties may discuss and negotiate between themselves. You're not hamstrung by that document per se. On another point that came up that did have some legal implication at least, you did advertise what the salary range would be, and that, of course, is governed by, to some extent, by the compensation system that the township has expressly adopted. It indicated a salary range dependent on qualifications in it. So, that also, you have some parameters that you're going to have to deal with that I'm just reminding you that I think you're all well aware of when you have these discussions. But the contract document itself, it can be a starting point of what you utilize when you make an offer, but it is not the end all. That was not expressly incorporated in the advertisements. However, the point is well taken that had you used different parameters in salary range, it may have brought about a different pool of candidates. Having said that, I don't see any particular legal issues that have arisen that caused me any grave concern here this afternoon on proceedings that have occurred.
Okay. Any public comment before we finish up here?
Really trust on Marquette Township? I think we should add more applicants for this job to start with. That's what I'm blaming the township board for very poor discussing.
Any board member comment? Randy?
Response to the public comment, we did advertise, and we did do what we could do, Will, but we, that's what we got.
You didn't advertise. You should have advertised after, we waited a month and all.
This is my time. And yes, we did advertise, we did what we could. It was in the paper, it was on some of the professional journals that you don't see, I understand that, but we advertised where we should have, and that's what we got, okay? It was in the local paper. That's all we can do locally, really. I mean, but we did, and we put it on our website. Don't call us out for that because we did the best we could do, okay? And that's the fact.
Okay, so we have only one motion actually to review.
Yep, the only motion to review was that we approved the agenda as presented, and it was carried.
Okay, so as a reminder, before I let everybody go, our next meeting is Tuesday, the 7th, at 6:30, and we will schedule probably a special meeting at that time. We'll add it to the agenda to have another discussion about a fourth candidate and where we're going to go. Dennis, thank you so much for coming and bringing your family, spending some time with us.
Thanks for the opportunity.
A little more adventurous than I had anticipated, but appreciate, appreciate you coming. One more motion?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See what time it is. 4:37, we are adjourned.